Hello and welcome to This Week in James City County. I'm your host, Renee Dolman. Today I have, once again, joining me in the podcast, Ruth Larson. Mrs. Larson is the Berkeley representative for James City County. She is also the Chair of the James City County Board of Supervisors and President-elect of the Virginia Association of Counties. Wow, that's a lot.
It is a lot. It is a lot, but it's, it's a good a lot.
Good.
Yeah.
Well, it has been a long time since we had the board members on, so I'm so glad. And you are actually the one that had the idea to bring it, bring you all back. So I'm very happy about that.
And I appreciate your willingness to do these podcasts. I always, I think they're so informative and I hope that citizens are watching them. And I do appreciate you, uh, once again, getting the board into the rotation.
Absolutely. Well, we are looking forward to it. So again, we have talked about you have a lot going on. The last time I think you were on was in 2021, which is hard to believe. That was three years ago.
Wow.
And so things are completely, there, things are different. So tell me, what does it mean? Let's start off with your new roles as the Chair and as President-elect. What does that mean? What do you have to do?
Sure. So really, the Chair responsibility is running the meeting, setting the agenda. Uh, that is, would technically be what the Chair does. However, the additional roles of that probably are that the Chair does represent the county. I most likely bug Mr. Stevens, uh, probably a little bit more than my, uh, board colleagues. I represent us on different things, um, in the community and regionally. So, you know, while, while technically it's running the meeting, setting the agenda, I don't have any more power than my other board members. Uh, so you know, it's, it's not that type of situation, but it is busy. But I would say that I, if I had to bet, I, I believe my other four colleagues are just as busy as I am. So, uh, that's, that is what I do as the Chair.
Well, and I think you bring up a great point because a lot of times, you know, this community, we have a lot of folks that have just moved here, that have come from out of state. They may be used to cities where there's a city council and elected mayor. That's not the way things happen here.
No, so I would say the Board Chair position is most likely like a Mayor Oriole position. Um, in that really when it comes down to it, the mayor, it does the same thing. Um, but just because of how busy elected officials are, because very rarely do you find in cities, counties, townships, that your boards or your city councils are full-time jobs, technically speaking. Um, but they really are. So then you find that mayors and board chairs do tend to take on additional responsibilities to try to help their colleagues out. You know, James City County, when the Board of Supervisors started, it was, it was much, much smaller than it is now. And so, you know, our responsibilities, our representation numbers have grown. And we are on a lot of committees. People like for us to come to events to learn about what their organizations are doing. Often those can happen at 11:00 AM, 2 o'clock. And when we're juggling, uh, perhaps a full-time or part-time job, you know, that, that's a lot. And so it's just interesting, the way these things have, have evolved over time. Now, when you talk about Fairfax County, which is run under a different style of government, their Chair truly has different powers and that is a full-time job, but so is their Board of Supervisors. They are full-time in the office in Fairfax, so.
Okay. Well, and I mean, I'm a little biased because I like James City County. Been here a couple of years and I think that it's good that you all are able, that you're still out in the community, whether, you know, working or what have you. And I think that, that you all come to it from different roles, business owners or educators or anything like. And I just, I think that that's great. I'm proud of us.
I agree. I think we have a really good, uh, you know, we have different, everybody has a different, a job that they're doing now, whether that's retired, whatever it is, you are bringing a great perspective. Plus I think the more that you are out in the community, the more you are hearing from your citizenry. You know, people are not shy about coming up to you, whether it's at the grocery store, the gas station, whatever event you're at, you know, people really want that representation government, representative government. And so, you know, that you are very approachable where, you know, maybe that's not so much the case if you represent our area on the state level or our, our Commonwealth on the national level. It's not so, you don't maybe run into Mark Warner and Tim Kane at the grocery store.
Right.
Or they may be a little bit more insulated, so.
Absolutely. So let's go to a lar, a little bit of a larger level and that's the state. And you are President-elect of the Virginia Association of Counties. So can you tell us a little bit about what that's all about?
Sure. So I will just, uh, back up a little bit and say, when I was on the school board, I was very active on, uh, BSBA, which is the state organization for the School Board Association. And I was on their executive board. And so I knew of the importance of getting involved with your state association. And so when I came over to the Board of Supervisors, I immediately wanted to get involved with VACO. And I did, and I didn't, didn't step right onto their board. But VACO offers us several opportunities throughout the year for educational opportunities to, matter of fact, uh, last month I participated in their Chair, uh, institute that they did, which they hold every year for new, brand-new chairs. And I had done that when I was Chair once before. And Scott actually asked me, you know, he said, have you done this before? And I said, well, I did do it before, but things often change. One, two, I try not to ever miss an opportunity to learn from my colleagues around the Commonwealth. And to me, you know, not only does VACO offer such a great experience in the experts that they bring to us in these different educational opportunities, but just sitting down and talking to somebody in southwest Virginia, northern Virginia, further in, uh, the Tidewater area, because while we can all be very different, there are so many things that we're very alike. And they may have tackled an issue differently than we did and vice versa on our side. And so we often can learn from one another and glean information that we can take back to our board and say, hey, this is the way that they're doing it in Roanoke County. And so we might be able to learn something and do something a little different. So, uh, you know, for a first couple of years, that's what I did. I also, um, Ms. Sadler and I, um, and Supervisor McGlinnan, Supervisor Eisenhower, we would go to the, uh, the annual conference. And again, that's three days where we're very busy. There's all types of different workshops. Um, and so I did that. I got on a steering committee and then I think a year or two later, the second Vice President role was, was becoming opening, there was an opening there. And so even though the representative happened to be from our region and I was concerned, well, you know, I'm not sure that I'll get that, um, I went ahead and put my name in the hat. And I was opposed. There was someone else that was interested in that as well. But I was, um, I was very appreciative that the nominating committee moved me forward. I, I should say that I had been our region representative as well. And so I have just been slowly working my way, um, up the, uh, VACO, uh, chain of command or leadership, I guess you should say. And so this year I am the President-elect. Anne Malik, who is from Albemarle County, is our President this year. And so what does that mean? Uh, it means I go to more meetings. And so I am on the VACO Executive Committee. I had our Resolutions Committee, uh, which we do in, uh, at our annual conference. And so I'm trying to learn as much from Anne as I can and as much from Dean Lynch and all of our friends at VACO that I can before I take over the President position in November. Now, somebody could always come off the floor and put in a nomination and I'm, so I don't want to assume anything. But right now it looks like I will be the President, um, after our, um, annual meeting this November.
Okay. So just in this, I'm going to ask you the impossible. In a couple of sentences, a couple of paragraphs, a couple of hours, can you explain what it is that VACO does outside of the education? Because I think that there's a little bit, especially as it comes to what's been happening right now with the General Assembly in session. How are, how are you all involved with that?
Sure. So VACO really is our advocacy arm. You know, as much as we would like to be in Richmond during session, that's not always possible because again, we have jobs. We have representation that we need to do down here in James City County. And we cannot get to the General Assembly every day. Uh, VACO has a staff, uh, that they divide the responsibilities of the General Assembly up, um, in their staff. And they are there advocating for us every day. Uh, let's talk short-term rentals. Uh, James City County has a very strong record when it comes to approving short-term rentals. We're at about 90%, but it is often misinterpreted for some reason at this, the level of the General Assembly. And for the past few years, there has been a move, there is right now, uh, to take away local control, approval of short-term rentals. And so for me, you know, I'm really passionate about that. And one of the reasons I'm very passionate about it is because James City County is a very interesting county. Uh, we have gated communities, but we have older communities that have been in for a long time and don't necessarily have mandatory HOAs. They have, um, maybe they have, um, ones that you can opt to join. Some neighborhoods have no HOAs. And so often they turn to the Board of Supervisors to act as a de facto HOA when something is coming along, say a short-term rental, who someone wants to turn their property into a short-term rental, but they're in the center of the, of a long-established neighborhood. Uh, they have neighbors around them that don't necessarily want to see a short-term rental there. And so when they hear about an application coming through, they come to us. They want us to not necessarily approve that HO, that, um, excuse me, that short-term rental. And so they talk to us about why they don't want it there. And so, you know, that is a position that we are often put in. Well, Richmond, um, has, like I said, for the past few years and this year, we just got a capital alert yesterday from VACO, um, saying, hey, reach out to your House delegate members. This has passed the Senate. We want to say, please do not take away local control from short-term rental approvals. And so, you know, it is so important to have VACO there doing that work for us, advocating why it's important, uh, to let localities decide the future of these types of things. And so, you know, that is the big thing that, that VACO does for us, in my opinion, is to be our advocacy arm.
Well, and that's a great example, um, that the short-term rental idea. So thank you very much for bringing that up. That was perfect. That was better than I could have ever guessed. So thank you.
It's just really important. Again, we are not against short-term rentals. I understand, you know, my kids, um, they're all in their early twenties. I've got one in their thirties. Uh, you know, they, they like the short-term rentals when, when they go away. Um, but it's, it's just important to leave that, um, approval process where it belongs, which is, um, in, in localities.
All right. I do have to tell everyone, I think we just had a bit of a technical glitch. It became dark in there.
It did. Do you want me to get up and go push the button?
No, just periodically, you know, talk with your hands or something. Logan, Logan English had to do that.
Okay, there you go.
I'm so sorry. You never know what's going to happen. It's always very exciting.
And I am a hand talker, but I'm trying so hard to be reserved, so I'll try to be a little bit.
Just periodically, just throw them up. I like it. I like it. I am too. I sit and I hold my hands while I do this.
Me too. Yes.
So speaking of things that are local control, local decisions, you all have a lot coming up this spring on your agenda. I know that we have talked about the Government Center. There's the Regional Sports Center. There's the budget. There's assessments. That's a lot. And I know that you have a board meeting in not very long from now. So what would you like to talk about a little bit more today? Or would you like to go ahead and cover all of them?
Sure. You know, first, I, I just would thank people and thank you. You did such an excellent job than the night of the community meeting. Uh, we had about 150 people there, which was a great turnout. You know, we used to do these before COVID and we would particularly reach out to HOAs and neighborhoods to say, you know, hey, come to the rec center. Uh, we're going to be talking with the county administrator and county staff. And they were really well-attended. And then unfortunately COVID came and then we've just all gotten busy and it's, you know, things are hard to schedule because our facilities are used a lot. So I was really excited to get back to those community conversations and I'm sure that we're going to be doing those in the future. And just a note that your Board of Supervisor members will be holding town halls in their, with their, um, uh, their, their districts. Sorry, I don't know. I was having a tough time, uh, in April. And just a note that the Berkeley District Meeting, I believe the last I heard was going to be at Legacy Hall. And the reason for that is we were having a little bit of trouble, uh, getting a, a place because schools are out for spring break that week. And, and that just makes it a little bit more difficult. So we are going to be holding the Berkeley District Meeting in Legacy Hall. You don't have to live, if you can't make your district meeting, please attend another one. And the times are going to be, we're going to try to do one a little earlier. We're going to try to do one a little later. So I urge citizens to come out to that. And I urge citizens to come out in the future if we hold community conversations. But we did cover the Government Center, which I thought Assistant County Administrator Reinheimer did a great job with talking about what that means for us. And we have, um, approved a, moving ahead with the design on that. Um, we did that, I believe, a couple of meetings ago. So right now we are moving ahead with that. We talked about the Regional Sports Center. I understand, uh, that it has mixed reviews. I did vote for it. I'm proud of that vote. I think that, um, I've talked a lot about the fact that I chair the Tourism Council. So I am very involved with tourism in our area. We are a tourism economy. You know, we are very lucky in that we do have some diversified interests here in James City County. But, uh, we are built, you know, we have, we are have a lot of tourism. Tourism is very important to our community. And we have done a lot of studying, a lot of research on why sports tourism is a good thing. Um, you know, one of the really important things that we know about sports tourism is even if our economy hits a downturn, parents are still going to continue to invest in their children in sports. And so I'm, I'm really excited about that. But the other piece of that, the very important piece of that is we are simply out of room, uh, in our James City County facilities. When, um, we are trying to schedule, uh, groups for practice, it, it is not easy, even with using all the gym space we have in our schools, which we have a great partnership with our schools in this area. But it's very tough to find room. And so we need more space. And so we had to take a look at, do we do something standalone? Or do we invest with, uh, York County, the City of Williamsburg in doing this? And, you know, really the City of Williamsburg is taking on the big piece of this, which is the capital cost. So I hope that, you know, um, everybody will, it just hold on. You know, we're going to be open here hopefully in the next two years. And I think they'll be very pleased with the product. And I think they'll be very pleased with the amount of visitors that it brings and what it offers to our citizenry, because I think it's really, really exciting. Uh, just, just a small note, I was supposed to go whale watching on Sunday with my family and down in Virginia Beach. And as we pulled into the parking lot, we got a text that it was canceled, uh, due to winds. And so believe it or not, my older children said, let's go to the aquarium. And so off we go to the aquarium at nine o'clock in the morning. I cannot begin to tell you the number of people that were there that day. And let's face it, they weren't in Virginia Beach to go, um, onto the beach because it was cold. Um, they were there because something has drawn them to this area. And what I found so exciting and interesting was that there were so many little tables scattered throughout the aquarium. Um, there was HRSD. They were doing a presentation on the SWIFT project. There was Go Green, um, Virginia. There was the Virginia Beach Parks and Rec. And all these different groups that were offering education to all of us that were walking throughout the aquarium. And I thought, what a great idea. You know, we are definitely going to have to do that once we get the sports, um, center open. You know, it's, it was educating you on why you need to pick up dog waste from your yard and what, what that does to our waterways, um, and why that's, it's so important. And that, that type of, that type of education is really important here too. And then talking about SWIFT and what that means for the future of HRSD. And so I am really looking forward to those types of things happening. So moving into the budget, yes, the budget, um, you know, it's, it's going to be very interesting this year. I know that you've had the county administrator on and you all have talked about, um, reassessments. I know you had, uh, Sharon on too, and, and you talked about what that meant. And so, you know, I fully expect that we will hear from citizens because, you know, our assessments are definitely going up. And I thought you, that last podcast you did, did an excellent job of explaining why that is. And, but we do, on the other hand, we do have a lot of pressure on our budget. Uh, we know we have a lot of things, uh, coming up. One is our compensation study. We, we need to make sure that we are, um, fairly compensating all of you that work so hard for James City County. And, you know, let's just a soft reminder, um, it costs to constantly have turnover. Uh, there's a lot of training. There's a lot of knowledge. And when we lose people, um, because they can go elsewhere and make a little bit more money, you know, there's a huge cost to that as well. So, you know, it would be my hope that we could all take a collective deep breath as we're going through this, not react immediately. Let's listen to the county administrator, hear what he's hearing from his department head, from all of you that work so hard for our county and what he feels we really need to do, um, moving forward. And so, you know, there's going to be a lot of that. Um, you know, lingering out there is, um, what is the City of Williamsburg going to do about separating, uh, their school division? And we don't know that answer yet. Um, we should hear something, I would think, um, in the next few weeks. But then, you know, they're going to have to go out to City of Williamsburg citizens, tell them what their consultant has found, what the study looks like, what is their willingness to do? Um, because I have a feeling that, you know, that's going to, that's going to take a little bit more revenue. I believe their, uh, their tax rate is 53 cents or something like that. And let's, you know, to run your own school system, probably going to cost a little bit more than that. So they have to hear from their citizens and their willingness. And then they have to come back to us. That may be after we've approved the budget. So what does that look like? Do we come back? Um, you know, because we know we are going to need a middle school if that separation happens. Uh, because we're going to need a place for 600 or so students to have their place in a seat. And so, uh, there's a lot twirling out there when it comes to this decision. And so, you know, I don't want to put pressure on the city. I want them to be able to do their study as best that they can, but it has an impact. And so I hope that they will come back to us in as timely manner as possible because I hope they understand what type, what this means to us as well.
My goodness. When I listed everything, I didn't even include the schools in the city.
It's, I think it's important to talk about that because, you know, once their study comes out, this is going to churn this all up again. And, you know, I, I'll tell you right off the bat, I'm not a fan of the last word because we are very accessible. You can call, you can call me and tell me you don't agree. You can send me an email. Tell me you don't agree with a decision I've made. I get it. Um, but that, that is a lot better line of communication than dropping something anonymously in the last word. But I, I'm sure that once this decision comes out, uh, once the budget comes out, once assessments come out, there's going to be a lot of this, um, anonymous dropping of information on that last page of the paper. And so it's just, that type of thing just churns things up. And so one, I would urge people to reach out, reach out to your supervisor, reach out, um, and, and tell us what you think. Uh, but I can't, I can't say, you know, however, the citizens of Williamsburg want to do that. But that type of thing, it's just always a lot of churning. And I want people to know that we know it's out there. We're waiting just like you are. We're going to tackle it head-on. Um, I have a very good relationship with the mayor of Williamsburg. We are on so many other regional things together. We are in constant communication. Doesn't mean, he doesn't give me any kind of inside track though. But, um, I want people to, to know that, you know, we're waiting just like you are, but we are going to deal with it head-on.
Well, and I think that that's a great segue to make sure you're following up with facts. Make sure that if you hear something, if it doesn't sound, if it sounds too bizarre to be true, look it up, give us phone calls. We're on the website. We're in the grocery stores, as you said earlier. You know, we're, we're available. Make sure, you know, we're going to have podcasts on all of this, social media on all of this. Now just try to make sure that you're going to reputable sources.
Right.
Get the answers to those questions.
Yes, it's just, you know, and I'll, I'll just go back to the Regional Sports Center for just a moment. There's still so much misinformation out there about A, the price tag, B, what our responsibility is. And we have done podcasts and we've done, we've talked about this in our meetings. And if you, you know, if you reach out to me, uh, ruth.larson@jamesitycountyva.gov, um, I will send you that information. I'm happy to. And, um, I'm happy to have a conversation about it, but you're so right. Facts are so important, especially in this day and age, so.
Very good. So again, I know you have a board meeting happening very soon. Is there anything else that you would like to talk about on this visit to the podcast?
No, just thank you. You do such an excellent job with these. These are such a great way to get information out. You can listen to these podcasts when you're in your car, if you're home, if you're gardening, if you, if you're on your lunch hour, I just urge people to go back, look at some of the podcasts that you've done and, um, listen to them because I think they're a great source of information. I know I enjoy them, so.
Well, thank you very much. And the important thing to also add is that we're on camera now. So you can watch our videos of us doing the podcast, which is always exciting.
That's right.
You can go to youtube.com/jamesitycounty. We're all there. Um, just, you know, I know that you're already famous. You're going to be even more famous now because the podcast, the board meetings, I see you everywhere.
Okay. I hope I don't need to get people if I, you know, my people will call your people. But right now my people are me, so.
Okay. Well, I mean.
Yes, and I do get some, some very good backup from Teresa, our board. I need to give her a shout out. She's great, so.
Absolutely. And we can always help be your people as well, so.
There you go. Thank you.
Very good. Well, once again, thank you so much, Mrs. Larson. I know you, I'm so, I know you're so busy, but you always are willing to talk with us and come on. And I really appreciate that.
Oh, I had a great time. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, that wraps up this episode of This Week in James City County. Thank you so much for tuning in. As always, please be sure to subscribe. That way you will never miss an episode. And Mrs. Larson has to wave her hands again to try to turn the light back on.
There we go.
Very good. Very good.
Thanks for the job.
Make sure you subscribe so you never miss an episode as well as you can get to our website. We're at jamescitycountyva.gov/podcast. While there, you're going to find our show, all of our shows as well as a form. Give us feedback, comments, critiques, questions for guests. We would love to hear from you. So once again, thank you so much and we will talk with you next time.